Go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order out of the city council eleven ten of twenty twenty five. The court please call rule.
Mayor Grant.
President.
Mrs. Carnahan.
Present.
Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Pointer.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Roderick.
Present.
Okay.
Junior council.
I know, I'm looking for my notes on who's on junior council. Morgan Wood.
Present.
Lillian Irwin. Grace Hiller.
Huh? Said it's just a marathon.
Oh, it is, it is. Mayor?
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting that would have been October the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to accept those as written?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make the motion again.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
And Roderick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead and move on to citizens petitions. Uh, they have, I have Cindy Schaumberg down with the feral cat questions. Uh, before we get to Cindy, I want to say that Cindy and I did have a good meeting this last week. Uh, she had a lot of good points about the feral cat problem. Uh, she also runs or works with a, a, a group out of Illinois and, and I'll let her expand on that. Actually, see she's out there, but I'll let her expand on that. Uh, one thing that, that I offered up was a, a place maybe to hold cats if they need to hold them for two or three days, uh, until they get enough to take them where they're going to take them. Um, and, and I offered up the old dog pound. Uh, it currently doesn't have any utilities down there and Eric said that he thought probably within a month we could make that happen, but it would give them a place to hold those overnight. Uh, it was temperature controlled and they could feed them and so on. Uh, also talked to the chief a little bit about, uh, where he's at and, uh, offered to set up a, a meeting with he and I and, and Cindy, uh, to, to go over finer points if, if they're willing to help us, uh, with, with the situation. I know that, you know, if the, if the police are trapping cats, uh, even if they're, uh, we're probably not going to put a dent in it, I guess is what I'm saying. So we need, we need all the help we can get. And with that being said, I'll go ahead and, and turn it over to Cindy. I've got you on for citizens petitions if you want to, if you want to speak.
My big interest was where they were going to return the cats. And I think we come to an agreement, they will be returned back to where they were trapped. So, um, you know, I did, I have a nonprofit TNR organization out of Illinois and I reached out to one of my vets that are there that I work with and she's offered to have just one massive clinic day to do like fifty to fifty-five cats to kind of jumpstart the situation here. And we're still trying to sort all that out and kind of run it out here, but.
I know we don't have all the answers tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the, the biggest thing was release for the cats somewhere else besides where they are supposed to be. And I think, you know, we come to a dream that they will go back where they're trapped. Sorry. So.
I appreciate you reaching out to all of us and coming in and talking to Larry about everything.
Offering your show.
Yeah, offering your expertise really in the area because I don't have that.
I mean, there's a lot of details with trapping, you need to do it right without, you know, and if you don't do it and you haven't done it.
Right.
Hard to know the right way to do it for the cat, you know, because it, I mean, it's trauma to them. They trapped and had surgery and, you know, at least amount of stress for them to get it. Stress causes illness.
I appreciate you.
You know, we've opened up a good line of communication. Hopefully I can offer some experience.
Okay. Is that it Cindy?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it was mostly to get settled about the release of the cats and, and we settled that.
Like so, I've talked with the chief and I think, you know, he's, he's in agreement, we can all work together and, and make this work well. Uh, we, you know, there's certain things that we're not going to do and that's, we're not going to tell people where we're trapping and where we're releasing them, but, uh, they will be released where they were caught or close to where they were caught. So, um, they won't have any trouble finding their way back home.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that's something we can talk about because most of our feeders and caregivers should be excited to be having TNR done and they can be very beneficial to be trapping as far as, so, you know, you, that might be something we discuss along the way as far as letting, working with the community.
Is there anybody else has anything on the cat situation before we?
My question was just.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
Misha Hansen. If there's going to be like a massive thing, um, is it going to be open to the public? Like if you have cats in your area, can you trap them and bring them to them as well or is it just?
That's a detail we'll have to work out. We, we, we haven't gotten that far. Cindy and I have been talking, but I, I don't think there's enough hours in the day to, to cover all that. One thing that did come up, uh, and, and, and I don't have a good answer for it even yet, but I know people who own cats and open the door and let them out. And that is against our city ordinance. Dogs and cats are not allowed to run at large. So what happens when we catch your cat? You let it loose, it's out running around town. We catch it, what do we do with it? Do we fine you because you're not supposed to have your cat running loose? Uh, do, do we take it, we have it spayed and neutered and bring it back and turn it loose in your front yard? I, I, I don't have the answer to that and then I think that's something that we've got to work out. I don't know whether you have any input on that or not chief, but that's a big question that comes to my mind.
Can I take three to five minutes here?
You absolutely can.
Um, I'll get to the front, everybody can see me. I'm Chief Miller. This was a program we designed to, as, as we negotiated our contract with Paws and Claws, our TNR program with Paws and Claws, was something that I, I think a lot of the community, the council, the mayor felt like we were under cheating. So just to kind of clear up the things that are going on on Facebook and, and social media, we've been in, in communication with a lot of individuals throughout the community. We're not going to release the date or site locations at which we're trapped because all that does is enable people to mess with our traps, which is city owned property and things like that. For what most people don't know is I have an Indiana state certified animal nuisance and wildlife control agent certified by the state with inside of my department. With that asset being paid for by the citizens of Attica and the city of Attica, we felt like it would be a great opportunity for us to assist in the TNR program. We'll be trapping the cats, we will be pre-baiting the traps. We'll be trapping the cats the night prior to our date for spay and neuter. We will then communicate with Paws and Claws. Paws and Claws will pick up in their transport van. They will be taken to the Paws and Claws vet facility for spay and neuter. Once they are wake up and get their whereabouts, they will then be released back in the general vicinity of the area which they were trapped. Now understand that we will be using some private locations to trap these where people don't want cats back, right? So they don't want the cats trapped and then brought back to their house and, and released. But they will be released in the general vicinity so that they can colonize back with their group, um, as, as they need. But we have to do something to eliminate the reproduction of these animals. And this is what we're trying to do here. I know there was a bad, a lot of bad mojo going through social media. Um, but we will trap, transport, spay and neuter, release, all within the guidelines of the state of Indiana and my certified animal control officer that I have on the department. The, one of the biggest benefits to this is not only are we going to assist in increasing our TNR program and actual, and have actual numbers of cats that we've trapped, spayed, neutered, released, but it's all going to fall at the expense of our current Paws and Claws contract. Besides the food that we're providing to these animals to trap them, the spay and neuter costs are going to be incorporated in our current Paws and Claws contract. It's not an additional cost to the city to do this. We're just trying to accelerate and assist our Paws and Claws contract through the TNR program. Okay, does that clear up?
Sounds great.
Sounds great.
I, I, I agree. I think we can use their help.
And we'll hit on, hit on another thing. When we talk about animals running at large, okay, we have, we, we have had multiple dog bites within the city for dogs running at large. We've had, um, multiple convictions from dogs running at large, um, that, that five individuals. Um, if an animal is trapped, that is chipped for sale. That chipped animal will, that will be read at the facility where the animals are being spayed and neutered. If that is a chipped animal and we know the owner, that animal will then be transported to Paws and Claws and will be held at, held at their facility because they have the facility that is capable of handling those animals and the environment they need to be handled in until the owner then contacts Paws and Claws to retrieve the animal. Now, after multiple occurrences, you could be subject to an ordinance violation citation. You will be required when retrieving that animal to pay the fees that are associated with a Paws and Claws release. So, I mean, I think that's, that's pretty cut and dry on the animals running at large.
Gary, how long are we going to run this program? Start, uh, start date, end date?
So we're going to run the, we're trying to run the program for a twelve month period and see where it goes. Twelve months gives us a good number to go on. We'll see what kind of dent we can make in the population, um, and, and have true numbers after twelve months. Now, when I say twelve months, that we're in direct coordination with Paws and Claws and their vet on what dates work for them to where we can have five, six, seven animals coming at a time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any other citizens petitions other than cats? Okay, I see you back there, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, you know, I see some names.
To state your name, please, I'm sorry. I, I know who you are.
Laura Keller. We've lived there fifty-three years and thirty-five years ago and we've always lived in that same area. The, the dogs running loose were horrible. I had to build a fence to keep them away from kids that I was watching it. I don't know, it sounds like there may still be a problem somewhere, but at least in our area, it's been a lot better now. But the cats are crazy and you kind of scared me there for a minute when you said you were going to start catching them. I really want them released back at my house. Although it probably keeps some of the mice away because of the grain bins, but, but that was, yeah, we've had cats running forever.
But through, but through state regulations and, and the wellness of the cats, TNR program was set in place for that reason, but you have to allow it to recover.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll start to, to gain control of some of the population through less.
And I'm tired of it with climate on my cars.
Okay, anything else other than cats? Misha, you had something.
Um, it would be nice to have some kind of fee where you have to submit that your dogs are vaccinated. In case, I, I wouldn't mind paying a fee for having a dog in town, knowing that I'm being forced to make sure that my dog is vaccinated.
We used to have that.
Because not as many does.
I think we're eventually.
And then when we do have dog bites, it becomes a problem. And sometimes those dogs don't get re-claimed. And there's nothing like, if the dog, they don't go pick up the dog, are they paying the fee or something for the?
They don't, they don't go pick it up, is my understanding, it's, it gets rehomed.
But does that owner face some kind of consequence for that? Like the same person keeps doing it.
Right, right.
I mean, we should be forced to pay a fee for that.
No reason having an ordinance if you don't enforce it.
Well, that's why we did away with it.
Yeah.
Honestly, we had, you used, you used to have to come in here and buy a dog tag and, and show that you had vaccinations for your dog and it never got enforced and people weren't buying them, so we just did away with it.
I think eventually they were going to have to get back to something like that. I mean, the.
You'd almost have to hire an animal control officer just.
Yeah, exactly. You know, um, and on what you were saying earlier, you know, about citizens wanting to get involved with the trap and release program, I think eventually that that's going to have to happen as well for us to put a dent into this. Um, we're going to have to figure out a concerted effort, you know, that, that citizens can go through, you know, like Paws and Claws, I don't want to sign them up for anything, but, uh, somebody who can overwatch it and make sure that it's done properly. So, uh, it's going to take some time, I think, for any of this to get worked out. But I would like to think that someday we will get a program like that in place.
Okay, one more time, is there anybody that has anything other than cats and dogs that they want to talk about? None being heard, we'll go ahead and move on to department heads. Mr. Swank, do you have anything for the group tonight?
You have started leaf pickup though.
Correct.
I just want to make sure everybody has that leaf pickup.
Hey, they've been in our neighborhood a couple.
They have, I was impressed, yeah, they've been a really good job.
Chief Miller, do you have anything in addition tonight?
Use my three to five minutes there.
All right, thank you. Chief Little is not here tonight. Mrs. Drugwater, do you have anything?
Just want to let everybody know that we finished the cybersecurity reassessment. It was a program the state began through a grant two years ago, allowing municipalities that signed up for it to have a cybersecurity assessment completed. It was a joint effort, um, for the assessment between IU and Purdue. And because I signed us up for that two years ago, um, we were able to participate in the reassessment. We, we are now, Larry and I was on the phone with them for what, two and a half hours, three hours? Um, last week, so now we're just waiting on the recommendations to come back on things that we need to put in place. Some of it will be policy, some of it will be, you know, equipment programs, things like that. But when we get that information back, we will share that with you.
That was all free and charged, dude.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Well, just your time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was, that was great.
I think that's all I have. Oh, no, one more thing. Um, you know, we're at the time of year where we're looking at budgets, making sure that we're going to end up in a positive by the end of the year. Um, I will keep you guys informed if there's going to be any kind of need for additional appropriations and or encumbering funds or moving money from one department to another or one category to another within departments. Okay, Mayor?
Okay, I'll go ahead and move on to committee reports. Uh, Wega update, uh, Kim Callwhite, the director called me this morning. We chatted for a little bit. She had a Wega meeting tonight and could not be here, but, uh, she wanted to assure me that things were moving along and, uh, it sounds like that they're making progress on the building downtown and, uh, also on the teardown of the, the Paris Dry Cleaners building. Uh, it's moving forward. Uh, so I was, I was glad to hear all that.
Hey Larry, I could add to that too?
Absolutely.
Um, so, uh, in talking with Kim, she also mentioned that, uh, they formed a subcommittee, uh, to actually handle that. I think Brian's on that subcommittee and, uh, uh, there's a, an architect, um, let's see, who else is on that? It's like Kim, I believe, is on that subcommittee, uh, to where they're, they're, they've got a specific set of people now that are kind of focused on that downtown project. And so I, I, I thought that that was really good news. And the other thing that Kim did mention as well is that, uh, she's very close to receiving, well, she had her test actually yesterday for Oprah grant, to write Oprah grants. And so that'll be fantastic, having that kind of capability where we don't have to go pay for it all the time. So she just, uh, I wanted to add that to it.
Thank you. Uh, see, Mr. Bauer Band is here, do you have anything to update us on the Attica two hundred?
No, we're just, um, the only thing going on, uh, we're trying to do some, um, you know, city has, of course, this life parade and there's the Badlands things and all, all things are going on, uh, for the bicentennial. We have, uh, we're going to have a, um, we're going to get a float into the parade, so we're working on that. And, uh, anybody have a, um, a hay wagon or a, or, oh, someone who could put me in touch with a farming unit that might have a hay wagon because we're going to try to build a float. But then, uh, and then we're going down at crafts, uh, and at leases, they're going to have a, um, some traditional type of, um, you know, making garlands and, you know, doing things like that. Again, just for people to be able to get out, going to do caroling, have a night of, uh, of caroling. And then we're also going to have a possibility for people to go cut a tree if they want to, you know, family wants to go and do a Chevy Chase version or something. So that's just, that's, that's going on now, that's just, uh, some small things.
Uh, we do have several of these signs that, uh, Mr. Smith and, uh, Davis Drugs, uh, who are, was that just the two?
Oh, Jimmy.
Jimmy. Uh, we've still got several of those out here in the office, if anybody's interested in, in picking up one of those. Uh, I don't know how many they've given out down at the drugstore, but we've given out a few here, but there's still a pretty good pile of them in there.
And bicentennial coins are in too, Larry.
Yeah.
Yep, we've got them.
Uh, go ahead and move on, I have the Attica park board on here tonight. I do not see anybody from the park board present tonight to present, but I have been talking to Jerry Mattern, uh, quite a bit this week. There was a, a tree up in Circle Park that is kind of dangerous. Uh, it's, it's, uh, right where, in the area where they're going to put some of the playground equipment that they removed from the elementary school. Uh, we made arrangements to get that tree removed. Uh, got ahold of Duke Energy, they're going to come take another look at it and, uh, and at the very least maybe get it topped out to reduce our city costs of getting the tree removed. So that was good news, I just heard from them this afternoon.
That's great news.
Uh, junior council members.
Hey Larry, there's a couple of other things on the park board. Um, uh, Justin Harmison, the president, has resigned and, uh, that position will need to be filled. Um, and, uh.
He's going to stay on, on the park board until the end of the year.
Yeah.
And it's, it's kind of up in the air right now, who's going to take his place as president.
Is that an internal thing or an appointed position?
If, yeah, they, they vote on who the president is. I, I, I would make the, the, uh, appointment for a new person to be on the board, but once he's off.
Um, there was a, I was talking to Jimmy about this, I might mention it to you too Larry. Uh, so this opioid money, it looks like we actually got a payment, like a one thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and some odd cents. And, um, I think that it goes into the general fund, I think that's what you mentioned, Joanne?
No.
It doesn't?
No, it's required to go into its own specific funds and it's literally limited to drug education and things for the police department to use.
Oh, when I saw the email though, it said that it was, uh, discretionary. It, it said that it.
Within the parameters they've set for the program.
Okay, so there isn't a way to transfer that money to like the parks board or something like that?
No.
And, and I do think that we made a little progress today. I've, I've talked to, I had Jerry Mattern on the phone today earlier with, uh, with Joanne. I think we've maybe found a way forward for them to get what they need to do with the park equipment from the school, so.
And what's that?
It, it involves using some of next year's funds and encumbering what funds they have left this year without getting down into weeds and being here all night.
Well, we can talk about it later then. Okay. Uh, okay.
Grace and Morgan are working on recruiting new junior council members and did you happen to bring those with you?
So I did end up getting that one person to refill it. I forgot to bring it in, but I just had my brother to go get the folder that it's in.
That's okay. That's okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate you doing that. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
I don't think so.
I did want to mention, as I was coming in, I heard it's Morgan's birthday today, so.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Keith.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's all downhill from.
I don't have a, a whole lot on the unfinished business annexation of Harrison Hills Property South. There's not really been any movement on that. Uh, I, I think we're, everybody's still kind of in a holding pattern to see what's going to happen with the solar farm and, and what's going on with the county there. Uh, ambulance relocation, I, I sent out an email last week or the week before to the council notifying them. But I was notified that the, uh, Duke Energy will be closing their offices and work control center out here east of town on twenty-eighth, uh, after the first of the year, uh, which is disappointing because we are trying to bring jobs to Attica and not export them to Lafayette. But those folks that, uh, work out here will be working on Lafayette. Uh, I didn't miss an opportunity to, uh, ask them if they would be interesting and interested in hosting the ambulance out there. Uh, would be an ideal location, it's, it's away from everybody, so it's not in my backyard, so to speak. Uh, they didn't say no, which is a good thing. Uh, you know, a lot of times, uh, you get a hard no and, and have to move on, but this was a maybe. So, uh, I haven't got a yes from them, but I think that would at least buy us some time for a more permanent and, and better location. But, uh, they, they have a building there that, that would be useful for that and we'll see where that takes us. Uh, Riverfront Park, the equipment was delivered this week and Eric called me today. The vendor is here getting ready to start installation, so we'll have that. Uh, we reserved the area, uh, where there's still a foundation at for the memorial to sit and, uh, be working with Nate on trying to come up with a rock and a plaque or something to put there uh, to memorialize the, the kids that died there on that spot. Uh, go ahead and move on, uh, I think the, the planning commission talked about an ordinance update for building permit fees along state right of way that require engineering. Uh, so I'd like to go ahead and have Mr. Bars bring that from the table and, uh, we'll look at that.
So, the, um, the plan commission is favorably recommended, um, adding a conflict of interest provision that's required by state law, uh, to your zoning code so that the building commissioner, not that there's a problem here, it's, uh, just kind of, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's that the state prescribes. Uh, he couldn't have a conflict of interest issuing building permits for himself or something that he's got a financial interest in. And that's kind of standard language in terms of how that's worded. Um, that's, that's from other ordinances that I've looked at and, uh, I've looked at the state code requirement. And then the, um, building permit fees, the plan commission recommended that if it's a commercial, well, if it's not a single family residence or agricultural building and, um, somebody applies for an improvement location permit that would need to be reviewed by the city engineers. Inside the city limits, they would pay a two thousand dollar fee, engineering fee for preliminary review and three thousand dollars for final review. And those fees would be refundable to the applicant if they're not used for engineering fees. And then they requested this additional language. In the event that the engineering fees for the preliminary or final review exceed the, these application fees and are required to be incurred by the state of Indiana, so it's required that you had to have the engineer review it, the applicant shall be responsible for paying the actual engineering fees. So if anything over, uh, what was collected, the two thousand and the three thousand dollars for inside town limits, for outside, well, for the two mile fringe, twenty-five hundred dollars for preliminary review, thirty-five hundred dollars for final review, refundable if they're not used. And if the actual engineering fees required by the state exceed six thousand dollars for the two mile fringe, the applicant is responsible for those as well. That was the change. So I've handwritten those changes because it just happened in a meeting at, uh, five thirty. Um, and so I, I can, if that passes, I can give a revised ordinance. But right now, that's the language that's in there, that there would be, I hand wrote in that if it, the engineering fees exceed the collected fees and those fees are required, the engineering fees are required by the state, that gets passed on to the applicant.
These fees pretty well in line with.
Yeah, so, um, I've got a couple of towns that do that already that are kind of near, um, West Lafayette and so they're kind of growing and they incur fees. So Otterpin was, they don't have a two mile fringe. It was two thousand dollars for preliminary review and three thousand dollars for final plant review for, for Otterpin. And then Goodland, I want to say it's just under that, like fifteen hundred and three thousand or fifteen hundred and four thousand. But it, um, that's for communities that are growing, that's a fee that.
It's a reasonable amount.
Yeah, you're getting hit with and it's, especially if it's in the fringe area, you get none of those, you get a slice of those property taxes, but you're one percent. but you're 100% responsible for the development, the engineering fees that is happening out there, so.
Sure, okay. So, Judd, the reason we did this though is to make sure the city doesn't have any cost associated with this. And with that amendment that you've added on here, that makes care of it. We won't have any-
Engineering fees.
Engineering fees.
Yeah, I don't know what other fees to stick away from you.
So even if it exceeds this, we're still covered. I'll make a motion to approve it based on what Judd's adding to it.
I'll make, I'll second it. Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do you want to go ahead and have these two copies signed?
I think he's got one he wrote on.
Yeah, I've, I've-
Which one? Okay, here's the one that was written on.
There were two copies. I need to take one away so I can actually-
Okay, sign both, Jimmy or Johnny. Please.
I also made copies of the other three. Make copies of the other three plus this. We need it. The other two plus that.
I've got copies.
For everybody?
No.
I've got copies for everybody.
So here's the two signed copies of that.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Crestline rezoning request for Columbia Street property from R2 to R3. Now here, just want to make it clear, uh, that, that we are not talking about the property on Sixth Street where the church is at. That's already zoned R3. Uh, we're not rezoning it into anything. Uh, but we're talking about the property at the corner of Sixth and Columbia, the smaller lot where, uh, they plan on putting their offices, daycare and, and some apartments as well. And that'll be a, a three-story building that's currently zoned R2. And I think if, if it was just going to be two apartments, they would probably have to, uh, they'd be fine. But it's going to be three apartments, so it needs to be R3 is the only difference. So we're not deciding tonight whether something's going to go on the church lot or not. That's already been decided. There were some questions about parking that came up and, uh, they, if they have, if they need more parking spaces, they'll have to go to the Bureau of Zoning Appeals and ask for a variance to make that happen. So that's not decided here tonight either.
And I'm setting that up. That'll be December 3rd BCA hearing.
December 3rd BCA hearing. They've already asked for that.
Yeah, about parking.
About parking.
Larry, you said they're asking for more parking?
No, they're asking for less parking. But our ordinance, our current ordinance requires more parking than what they have per the amount of apartments they're proposing to put in. We won't litigate that tonight. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Tina Lucas. I have a question. Are you talking about the parking lot beside the church, the parking lot there?
No, we were talking about the little parking lot over on-
The little one that was cleared out?
Yes, where the house burned down several years ago. Across from the parsonage, yeah.
Yes, okay, all right. Cause I thought about, or my house was on the corner there, 306.
Oh, okay.
So that's one. Will it affect, this shouldn't affect property value or anything, right?
I'm not a real estate expert.
I'll take that one.
We, we do have real estate expert here.
Article research I've ever seen about developments such as this, and I've done a little bit this year, um, says that property values go up.
So I wondered.
That's everything I've seen. I've never seen any factual things that say that it makes property values go down.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Well, the assessed value of the property would obviously go up because they're putting structure on their property. It's going up.
On their property.
So you would think that that would reflect on the surrounding properties.
And that means they increase property taxes, too.
Well, I don't know.
Well, on their property.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yours is basically dependent on any improvements you make and then the value of the market. As the market goes up, then your tax assessment goes up. If you're, if you're, well, it's been, the market has went up significantly for the past five years.
Right.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Nope. Before we, before we do this, are there anybody else that, that needs to speak about this? Or is there any questions?
The developer here, if you have any questions. And, um, that, that lot was going to have three units, an office and a daycare with a outside, a small outside, then standard playground. Is that correct? That's what we're talking about rezoning it for.
I think they did a good job covering it in the other.
I do. I, I just know there's people here at this meeting that were not at the last one.
My name is Deisha Hansen. Um, my only question was, for those that want here, was if the daycare was going to be open for the public or if it was just going to be for the units? Um, and if it was income-based or how that was going to work?
And, and I was here, I think the answer to that was, we don't know yet.
He has to find an operator first.
It will be open to the public, we know that. Um, but how the income or, or the cost, that'll be up to the operator.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Let's, uh, let's, uh, I, I-
I have a motion to approve.
Yes.
I'm second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I gave Joanne the certification from the Plan Commission that made the favorable recommendation. Like they're supposed to make some type of recommendation to you, which is just advisory and which is why you have an advisory Plan Commission. Um, and then you ultimately decided. And so, uh, and then two ordinances, one for Joanne and one for me. And that's all I want to do, that one.
John, I think you'll need to.
Let's get these signed and then we'll-
Larry and John are done.
Are you, would you be, just buzz their signing this? Are you okay with showing that picture? Is that okay? Just because I know they didn't get, some people didn't get to see it? And I just, I find you guys really impressive. I always think you do a really great job coming in and talking with us. I know you haven't got to talk a lot this, this last couple of times, but when you came in July of 2024.
So it's the small one at the top of that picture that we're talking about?
Do you need this back, Judd?
You keep the certification. I've got a copy and I need one copy of yours.
Mm-hmm, and-
Close that one.
File has all the evidence within. The green card.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, please. And what did you number that one?
After A.
Sorry, I have to answer the next question. So the first one was-
Number, we also, it was a number, but we used a letter as well.
Okay, moving on. Attica Vacation Rentals rezoning request, uh, currently zoned industrial. They'd like to rezon to R3.
We think it's actually zoned maybe suburban.
No.
Did they go back and check it?
Where we're, where we're talking about tonight is zoned industrial.
Okay.
The area across the street, which they have not petitioned to rezone yet, is, in my opinion, still zoned suburban.
Okay.
But that's neither here nor there for tonight.
Just doing the west side of the streets, got it.
Don't let it water.
Sorry.
Kyle is here. Um, it received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. It's your recommendation and two ordinances if anybody makes the motion to change it to, uh, from industrial. I think it's M2 or I2, it's industrial, to, uh, R3 so it can be used as a temporary vacation rental.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That was the easiest thing we ever did.
Sucking.
I'm all C.
You're the reason all the meetings back to back.
Well, that's true. That is the reason. Who's, who's, who did this one do? Dwayne did this one. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You get another one, too?
Oh, I already had Johnny sign it and I've already got the signed copy. Thank you. I need some more paper.
I got one more thing.
Is it?
Subdivision, Hutton subdivision.
I know, I had copies of that.
I've got, I've got. Um, I've got one more thing, which is kind of from the Plan Commission.
Okay.
Didn't I catch you, Kyle?
Mr. Bars says one more thing from the Planning Commission to discuss.
The Plan Commission heard a, uh, an application for final plat approval of the, um, Hutton, Attica subdivision, which is the urgent care in the AutoZone that's going next door. And, um, last year, a survey was recorded that showed those as two lots and they, it was not approved by the Plan Commission. It didn't go through the process, so they came back and they're going through the process. And, uh, so they submitted, um, the, um, their plat and it, it meets our ordinance. It, it has the setbacks in it and it has access in it and it, uh, covers what a subdivision, a, a minor plat subdivision would require. And so the Plan Commission gave it its approval and now there's an approval to make it an official subdivision of the town, of the city. Uh, the city council approves it and then I record that. And, and they pay for the recording fees and all of these other fees to publish the notice because it was advertised for tonight to be considered tonight. That's why I wanted to take this up. And the reason why all this started or how it got caught was they were selling that AutoZone lot and they referred to the legal description as Lot 2 and the Fattah County order saw that and pulled it and, uh, wouldn't record it until the Plan Commission gave their approval, which is how it should work. I mean, I, uh, that was pretty savvy on their part. And they came and the applicant came right back through and did it the right way, no problem. And, uh, the surveyor was here, I don't know either.
He's, he left.
He left. So, uh, he, he was asking if it met all the requirements. He was quite communicative about making sure that it was done right. And so, uh, if you would consider a final, there's your certification and then the certificates for final plat approval.
The only thing that I had, I talked to the surveyor while I was sitting there and I just asked him, okay, have you submitted this back to the recorder? You know, and have they approved it? You know, with the real description? He said that he did actually and they did say that they would accept it.
They, right.
So, so this is, so the documents are good.
Right, right. So, so what he, they needed AutoZone, wouldn't, they had equipment ready to go, uh, and start their construction, but they didn't have this transaction closed yet because this deed was held up. And I suggested maybe not referring to it as Lot 2, but describing the legal description of Lot 2 on their plat, use that. Because that way we know that, that real estate is spoken for and they could go ahead and get their financing and start their digging and without delaying construction. So this is just coming back and buttoning something up is what, what it is. And they've done what they were supposed to do after the fact.
Can I make a motion that we have?
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Not anymore. Okay, so we need to get you on that. Two sentences again.
One's for you, one's for me on that certification.
So, Jimmy.
Jimmy. Jimmy.
I'm Katie.
What, Jimmy?
And you're what?
I know.
It's not even that late, it's still time frame to break the news.
Uh, I don't have any other business. We'll go ahead and do a final council roundtable for the miscellaneous business. Mr. Roderick, do you have anything for the group?
No, I do not.
Mr. Smith, do you have anything for the group?
That's why I want to get through all this stuff so I can-
I knew there was a methadone matter.
Okay, so, um, as you know, last, uh, council meeting, um, you know, the, the Wabash Riverfront is really wide open for us. There's a lot of low hanging fruit for the city to, uh, uh, receive grants. And, um, we actually had a visit from DNR, the DNR representative. Uh, we walked the riverfront and, uh, he explained to me that he's excited about the different opportunities we have here in the city. And, um, so in order to kind of start talking about the river, the Wabash Riverfront here, I've kind of, you know, I've talked to some other people that maybe it would be better to talk about it in four different aspects. You have the river, the Wabash River. You have the river shoreline. We have the Wabash Park and then we have the towpath and canal. That's all a part of the Wabash Riverfront. And, um, and, uh, right now where we're at is that we have, uh, the opportunity to submit two grants, uh, proposal for two grants. One is about a, I don't know, $10,000, $15,000 grant that would actually do a sediment analysis in the river uh, to where they would go in and, um, evaluate, you know, how much silt, how much sediment, soil, that kind of different things. And, um, this, this, uh, is a precursor. You have to do this in order to get the grant money to dredge the river, okay? And, um, there is $100,000 each year, uh, in with the DNR. It's not a lot of money, but it's money to dredge the river. And, uh, and it could be where we would have to do this 10 years in a row to actually do parts of the river to dredge it, okay? And, uh, we talked about not being able to do anything in the riverfront because of the floodplain. Well, this is a way to resolve some of those issues in the floodplain is to fill it up. And, uh, and, and so a lot of people will say, well, it's going to fill back in. Well, that's okay. We'll put it back up in the floodplain and build everything up to where, you know, we can use it and not worry about being flooded out. And as part of that, there's a second, there's a second proposal that the, uh, that's out there. And this is for a feasibility study for the shoreline. And the feasibility study will go through and identify what areas need to be corrected on the entire shoreline and to help stabilize it as well. And, uh, that is to the tune of about $35,000. It's a little bit more entailed. And that also is a precursor for the shoreline stabilization money, which is another $100,000 grant per year. And that would be, uh, and, and it would actually go kind of hand in hand as to where we would dredge one part of the river and, and, and put it into the park uh, to raise the park up and then, uh, then the shoreline would be stabilized at the same time. We can decide on where we want to start with this, but to me, it looked like it was about, um, you know, uh, over a million dollars that might be available to us. And, uh, so it's my intention, okay? And hopefully I have the council's approval to move forward with this, uh, to write the proposal, uh, to get the, to get everything running, get, get it rolling. Uh, this money will not, the money for the, we're, you know, actually we're pumping and we're, we're making real physical changes, would not happen until 2027. So in 2026, we're going to be doing the studies and then in 2027, that's where the real money comes in. Also have had a con- a conversation with the Department of Transportation to create a spur into the riverfront off of the Paul, uh, Paul Dresser Bridge. And, uh, they're very open to it, um, to actually allow us an entrance in, into the, into the riverfront. And, um, they're looking for more of a master plan concept from the council, um, or from us or whoever's, uh, working on this so that they can deceive and decide how they could actually play along with this. Let's see. Also, as a part of this, uh, Brent Bauer Van worked, uh, in the towpath area. He actually built a scaled-down model of the lock and he and I had a chance to continue, or we were talking about what could we do, um, in one of the other parts of the riverfront. And I told Brent, I'm like, man, why don't we just go ahead and build the lock full scale? And, uh, you know, he about killed himself on that miniature version, but he learned a lot. And, uh, so, so Brent has kind of agreed to go ahead and start pursuing the Canal Society and, um, also a fellow by the name of Terry Bodine. And, uh, Terry built the full, that, that built a really cool model that's actually in the courthouse.
I might not look at it today.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty cool. And so-
Sculpture.
Brent, Brent has kind of, uh, you know, uh, I mean, you've kind of stepped up the place, said that you're going to kind of run that part of it and try and find us money. See if there's money to go ahead and build that full-scale lock. And I think that there would be a phased-in approach. Now, Dwayne also knows that about, what, five, six years ago, we worked with HWC and we did a topography of the towpath. Uh, we actually paid for that, so we have a point cloud of all the different, uh, elevations, okay? And, and what needs to be dug and what doesn't need to be dug, interferences with underground utilities and things like that. And, uh, so I guess the kind of the concept might be, uh, and what we talked about before, is that we take out, we take out part of, uh, Washington Street, right there at the bottom of McDonald's, uh, and, uh, that we would actually build, uh, well, it'd be a wide water area and we would kind of phase in where we would actually first build a- we would actually first build the lock, okay? Build it to the correct elevations and, um, and we could probably self-fund that because I think it's, we can find the people, the sawmill and, and the timbers and we could probably put it together with the city's help and actually build a true scale lock, which would replace lock number thirty, is it thirty-nine? Is that? Thirty-five, thirty-five. And that we can actually do that ourselves and get the ball rolling. Um, as a part of the study that we did, there were, uh, there's plenty of water under there and there was a location of two wells that would actually flood the entire, the entire tow path or the canal from, uh, basically, uh, the highway all the way down to right, almost to the end of where the, um, sewage treatment plant is. And then there would be a, and these would be in phases where in the first phases, we build the lock, okay? No water, just build the lock. Then the next phase is take out, take out the, the road, work with DOT to bring the other spur in so we can move traffic in and out. And all at the same time, we're dredging, we're also building that floodplain and we're doing all this stuff. And I think we also should pursue it. I, I actually sent you an email on this, uh, about maybe a riverfront district designation where, um, the city might be able to actually build on top of some of the, of this, uh, new, new area that we've recovered down on the riverfront to actually be able to lease, lease back to restaurants or whatever. I think eventually, I think that looking at some ways, be able to have new monies and income for the city to kind of work off this. The, at the base, at the base, if we take the road out, we would, I think that we should put a welcome center or, um, a visitor's center there that, uh, would house other things, like some of the projects that Brent has talked about that they did for the Attica two hundred, um, and that kind of thing. So I think that, I think that this is really a, a, a cool opportunity to start, uh, pursuing monies. And I think there is Lily money, there's Ocre money, there's different things like that that are out there that we don't know until we actually start putting the plan together. So.
Right. And there, the, uh, the gentleman from Covington, um, Bodine.
Yeah, Terry Bodine.
Terry Bodine, yeah. Um, he's quite knowledgeable. I talked to Carol Freeze today and, uh, uh, he's in the Canal Society and, you know, so we can figure out what the Canal Society is able to, you know, give you an advice and, and help and direction. And, um, and then, yeah, just see what the, but it, it's interesting. There's so many different pieces, like you said, with the four different parts that, that really have some good assets there that you can either go after them one at a time, you know, a single type of, uh, you know, grants and projects, but kind of putting it together might give them some leverage, you know, to kind of say there's something really nice you could put together there.
Yeah. And the DNR fellow that, um, Doug Nussbaum, he, um, he told me that it's really our choice. Do we want to stay at the state level and work with, uh, the state of Indiana? Or do we want to go to the federal level and work with the Army Corps of Engineers? And in this particular case, the feds have a lot more money. They probably would be pretty excited about this project, but we lose complete control. They'll take over everything. So, um, so I don't know. But, uh, my goal is not to solve all the problems. It's my, my goal was to make the council aware of what I've been working on and, um, and just kind of like I have a, a, a look see as to where we might be able to go with this. And so I just wanted to kind of inform you guys. Dwayne, I, I worked with Dwayne, uh, about five, six years ago. We did some initial engineering work with, uh, HWC. And, uh, so we've got some good, good stuff there, but, um, I'm, I'm looking for, um, an approval from the council to continue moving forward with, uh, the pursuit of these, uh, two, two grants.
One thing I would ask though is already matching, what's the city has to put towards any of those?
There, on, on one of the grants, there is, okay? And it's about twelve hundred dollars on the sediment analysis. Uh, it's, uh, the total cost, I think it's twelve or thirteen hundred, but they're, or thirteen thousand, but they're going to fund it. And then there's, if we hold a public hearing, then that counts as extra money for us. And so he told me that we would count on about twelve hundred dollars for the, the sediment analysis. I do believe that the, the feasibility study for the shoreline stabilization is a little bit more. I, I don't know exactly, but I'll know more by the time, you know, we, we still have another, uh, meeting on, in December. So I, I would be able to dig into the details and get more, you know, more information.
Was there any conversation about the feasibility of using the dredgings to build up as far as compactability? I mean, and maybe that's what that sediment analysis tells us is, is, is if this material is compactable? I mean, it does you no good to put it up there and if it's going to be a, a slurry forever, right?
Exactly. And, and Larry, I'm not a civil guy. I'm an electrical guy. So it's like, I don't know, but I, you know, the concept.
I thought maybe they talked to you.
Well, no, I mean, but it, it's like, we'll know more about that. But the concept works. I mean, the concept in my mind works, but you know, I don't know. I don't know that answer. I, I, I need to, we need to dig deeper into it.
I, I just know that, you know, certain soils compact better than others and, and then you, you gotta have a certain amount of gravel and maybe it's a perfect mix. I don't know, but just.
I think, I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah. Oh, I think it's worth looking at for sure. Never heard, it's like I told you, never heard it's to ask.
Well, I'm asking.
I'm favorable to move forward, see what we can get done. Yeah. It, it, it would help that area down there.
You're talking about removing a part of the, the street though? You're talking about.
No, no, I'm just talking about right now, just, uh, just, uh, moving forward on the grants, go, writing, writing, uh, proposals for the grants, the two grants, the feasibility study and the sediment analysis.
See what that takes.
That's, that, that's all I'm asking for.
I'd be willing to listen. Yeah, and see what you come up with.
I think that makes sense.
Well, how would that fit? I know, Brian, you've commented on a thing I wrote there, you know, which was, uh, you, you've got the, uh, the city plan, the Troyer Plan, okay? And it has a canal district out in, I think, eight years or something like that. And, uh, does that get into any kind of changes in, in terms of, you know, planning commission or anything like that? If you start to move, you know, I guess the question would be, you get to say, you get the wee area down at the county, the city market. Where does the next thing that happens on the, I don't know.
The, the plan all along and the master plan was to, to have a path to the river. So that, this probably would kind of fall into that, I would say.
I would say a couple of things. I think half of the things you mentioned are in that master plan already. Um, this would certainly work. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, uh.
So Dwayne, you're saying since it's, it's, the plan is to get to the riverfront, then anything that is, fits with that.
Right.
Is to be considered and figured out how.
But our master plan probably has to be updated. I think you have to do it every so many years. I, I'm not sure.
They're probably going to ask for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they will. They, they want a master drawing and, and a, and a plan. Uh, so in line with that, okay, I talked to Larry and, and had to look at some other things. And so in order for us to move forward with the riverfront, um, I don't believe our parks and rec board is equipped to handle this kind of effort. Okay? And, um, and so I've been to go into the park and recs board meetings and, um, I proposed to them the possibility of relinquishing control of Wabash Park to a different group, different entity, nonprofit, whatever it is, as to where, uh, and, and then in return, you know, they, they receive more support for the parks that they, they currently have. And, um, so, uh, but I think that that has to happen also, that we have to get buy-in from the parks board, uh, to, you know, kind of move forward with this. And so this is all in introductory stages, but I do believe that we have to move some things around there.
That was actually like one of the things, is it, is the park board involved with any of these plans and have they been informed of like you doing any of these grants?
They have been informed. Yes, they, they have been.
I figured you probably did, but.
Yes. Um, okay. So, um, I got what I want out of that. Okay. The next thing, um, there's, there's just a couple of other items. Um, so clearly the, the city of Attica, and of course I'm an outsider, I've been here for about six years now. Um, the, the city of Attica really needs to have, I believe, the school board and the city council working hand in hand. And, um, so I've reached out over a period of a few months, maybe longer, to, uh, the superintendent at the, at the school as well as, uh, the president of the, uh, the school, the school board. And, uh, first, it's very frustrating for me because I was asking to have meetings or a joint venture, working together. Um, and, um, they didn't bother replying. And I, I sent multiple requests, left voicemails. And, um, I, I, I kind of kept it to myself, but I thought, you know, I'm just going to let everybody else know that we're trying to see if we can do better things for the city, but if the school board's not going to reply, gosh, uh, how can we move forward and be better? So I just wanted to, uh, make everybody aware of that.
Um, they don't want to do anything to help our children. I'm sorry to say. We need alternative school. They neglected us of that. And that's a very, very dissapient.
Sir, would you please state your name? I don't know who you are, but you're, you're speaking, so.
I'm Charles Chambers.
I'm Charles Chambers.
So, so it's very disappointing to me, but I thought I'd let the council know that, that I have tried to, um, reach out and I just don't understand why they won't return the call, just even return a call. But they won't do it. So, um, if anybody's got an idea on that, I'd be interested. Um, and then the other thing too, um, the one last thing, uh, we're faced with this SB one bill, um, coming up in the future. And clearly we're, we're going to have to cut budgets. We're going to have to really take a hard look at things. And I think that we should be preemptive right now and start taking action. And so one of the things I think is very low hanging fruit is that we divest ourselves of the cemetery, the Attica Cemetery. And the reason I, I believe that is because there's no other cities, hardly maybe four or five in the state of Indiana that run their cemetery. And it's a tremendous burden on our city because we have guys that should be working on our infrastructure when they're grave digging. And, um, I just want to make a point that I think that we need to get out of the. I think we need to get out of the grave digging business, um, and, um, and give, give Eric, Eric more time and more resources, do other things. And, um, and so I don't know if anybody's got an opinion on that, but, um, I think we make a move.
I got an opinion. If you privatize a cemetery, next thing you know, you're going to have higher prices in burial plots. Look at Lafayette, for example. Thousands upon thousands of dollars, uh, for burial plots. The, the city has run that cemetery as a service to its citizens. Is it a loss? Sure. I mean, are we going to bump it up to where it's a profitable venture? Uh, well, you do that, now you're going to have a lot more problems on your hands because, you know, you're going to have a lot of people that aren't, just aren't going to be buried because they can't afford it, you know? Of course, me being in the funeral business, I believe that everybody deserves to have a, you know, a respectful burial, uh, whether they, you know, are homeless or, you know, Bill Gates. Is it out of loss? Yeah, it is. And cemeteries are not big moneymakers. And if you run them as, to be moneymakers, it's going to cost exponentially. I mean, it, for one person to be buried, it's, it's thousands upon thousands of dollars, you know? Um, I guess if, so you're suggesting that we don't offer this service to our citizens?
I, I'm suggesting that we divest ourselves completely of the cemetery and look and see what options are out there. Maybe Moss Funeral Home would want to take it over.
Maybe you could take it over.
No, I, I, I clearly want to get rid of.
Needs to have this in their portfolio.
I, I really want to get rid of it. That's the reason why I'm bringing it up.
Hey, you're talking about dumping something off onto somebody, Johnny. You want to take it, go right ahead, but.
No, I don't want to take it. That's the reason why I'm bringing it up.
You're talking about, you know, turn it into a business, it's.
Well, why is nobody else doing it?
Who would take it, I guess?
Well.
Yeah, well, get an investment group, but it's going to be five thousand dollars for a grave space.
I don't understand why we're the, one of the few cities that do it. I mean, obviously all these other cities have figured out how to do it. Bethel, the Bethel Cemetery has figured out how to do it. I don't know. I don't understand. And I do know that it's a big expense and.
Bethel's also ran by volunteers, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's a big difference there. The Bizarre family has done a phenomenal job about their taking care of that cemetery.
I know that in the town of Burksville, Kentucky, they have, uh, two funeral homes there and, uh, they, they contracted the resources and, uh, the, the city of Burksville does not take care of it. And that's been that way since forever. I don't understand why the city of Attica is doing it.
What are they charged for a grave space?
I, I don't know, but everybody, they, it just works.
It's a lot more about what it is here.
I, I, I don't know, but clearly something's, you know, that needs to be addressed here, I think.
Maybe we need to see what the cost is to, for Eric to bring these guys to, to dig and, I'm just throwing out, whatever the cost is, maybe we need to up that open, the.
We already upped it.
We did that just last year.
Mr. Kempel?
What about reaching out to township trustees if township wants to.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. I think there's a lot of good ideas out there. I just think that our ideas or my ideas, we don't want it anymore. We don't want to pay for the expense. We can't afford it and, and cuts are coming. And I'd much rather cut the cemetery than cut, you know, people and services.
Township based cemeteries are not as well kept as what we have here. Our city boys do take good care of it. Uh, our citizens do have expectations for it. Are they able to pay for that? On, how much are you going to try to squeeze out of the grave? You know, where are you going to be buried?
I, I'm, I'm not worried about that right now. What I'm worried about is what we have coming from the SB one. And it's clear that this, this graveyard, the, the city of Attica should not be in the grave digging business. That's my opinion.
Has been for a very long time.
But they're one of the few that do it. They're the one, one of the few that do it.
We are not the size of Lafayette, unfortunately. And, uh, some of these cemeteries, they are privately owned and, you know, they, I've been to some very, very nice cemeteries with some very lovely mausoleums, even just up in Lafayette. You're talking millions upon millions of dollars and burials that cost much more than most people can afford or even willing to. Um, but then again.
The township trustee and see if they're going to have to take it over. I mean.
I, I, I'm just saying, I'm just letting the council know that this is an issue and it needs to be addressed. And I don't have the solutions. I don't, I'm not trying to pretend.
And I'm not arguing that you're, you're right. It is.
I mean, you know a lot more about this than I do, Nate, but I'm telling you, it's clear that we need to start seriously looking hard at this.
It, it is a loss and, but I don't think it's something we're going to settle overnight or figure out overnight. But I, I don't think it hurt. Again, I don't think it hurts to ask some questions and look and see what our alternatives might be down the road. Somebody had a question out here. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Larry, I'm from a very small town, that's on the Wabash too. And, uh, the cemetery has, and then it's, you know, you're talking Lafayette. Well, you keep calling us a city. Lafayette's a city, Attica is not.
Attica is actually a city.
We are actually a city.
I mean, I'm talking about terms of size and.
Right, right.
And, um, anyway, where I'm from has a cemetery and they have in recent years outsourced and they're doing a lousy job of it.
And that's what I'm afraid to.
The town does still control the property, the property, how much a grave site is. They just outsource the maintenance.
Me.
And I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to do it, but I want to get, I want to get rid of the expenses, you know?
And you're talking about this SB one bill, now what is that?
Senate enrolled act one. It was signed by law by the governor in March of twenty twenty-five and it is capping property tax growth, um, completely eliminating all local income tax for economic development, public safety. And if it would, if it went into effect in twenty twenty-five, it would have eliminated a million dollars in the city's budget of two million. Um, so these are the challenges that we're facing as a municipality. The property tax caps are being phased in and the local income tax completely goes away for the twenty twenty-eight budget. And at this point, we have very little recourse in replacing the local income tax. Um, we have no recourse to replace it independently on our own. Um, we will have to request from the county that they impose a local income tax on our behalf. And they can keep up to seventy-five percent of whatever amount that they impose. And our limit to impose is one point two percent. So everybody's going to see about an average of about three hundred dollar savings on their property taxes and the city's getting a million dollar revenue cut.
That's one of the reasons why, like for example, Jimmy, today and I, he and I today went to the county council meeting because the game's changing. It's completely changing. It's not the city of Attica by themselves, running everything by themselves. Now we have to play at the county level to make sure we have money for our budgets. And so the, in my opinion, the game has changed. And so we're up there, you know, we're, uh, kissing babies and shaking hands because we've got to make sure that we get the biggest percentage we can out of that money that's going to be withheld.
And is this some of the money that we share with Coe Dean? Cause I was told recently that some.
No.
Share with.
No.
That's because of effect of twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
The, the SEA one is being phased in over the next four years. Different aspects of it go into place in different increments over the next four years.
So, um, so all I want to say is that I would like to continue to work on the riverfront. I put my time into it and, um, and, uh, and I'll continue to bring things to the council. Um, I also still. Um, I also still want to belabor this point on the cemetery, and I'm done. And so Jimmy, you get to go.
Mr. Pointer?
I've got a little bit I'd like to help from the city. I'd like to see if I can help, maybe with Mr. Swank, give him some infrastructure. We got stuff coming in, as you know, the new apartments are going over here on Sixth Street. Kyle, we're working with the Badlands, we're bringing new stuff out there just to make sure our infrastructure's gonna get better. We need a lot of help here in the city. You know, that's all the stuff that we don't see on top. Yeah, we see the blacktop roads, but all the other stuff laying under it. I'd like to see if I can move forward and help improve that situation for us in the city.
How are you doing that?
I'll meet with Mr.'s.
I mean, that sounds like a campaign speech rather than...
I'd like to get there, cause I know he's got a lot of stuff he needs, and maybe I can help him and see if he can bring, present some stuff to me that I can bring for us to...
Are you volunteering physically, helping? I'm just trying to figure out what you put in the minutes. Are you volunteering to work with Eric's crew, or what are you vol- what are you volunteering to do?
I'll meet with Eric and talk to him, see what he might need, help him improve to get stuff moving forward.
Oh, okay.
Pursuing grants, whatever, right?
Yeah, grants, whatever we need to do, I'll try to help him.
Okay.
So, if you present stuff to, to get money to help the city if we can do stuff.
So, Jimmy, you're saying that you're gonna be kind of like the infrastructure guy?
I'm trying to get you off here.
Yeah, I'll be the infrastructure guy.
We need...
Zero term, my own, you are.
Yeah.
I think we can weedeat out the cemetery, Jimmy.
I can grab a, I can grab a...
That would reduce our costs.
Is that all you got, Jimmy?
Yes, that's it, sir.
Mr. Moss?
I'm just glad to see things moving forward and, uh, guess next meeting will be here in December. I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and don't eat too much, and everybody be safe.
Thank you. This is Carnahan.
I do not have any questions.
Next regular meeting scheduled for Monday, December the eighth, 2025. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.